Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Need approval of the January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen minutes first. If there's any additions or corrections or changes, I'd like to hear them at this time. Motion to approve. Motion second to approve, January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official, and we need the February the eleventh, two thousand and sixteen minutes approved. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, is our motion to approve. Motion second to approve, February eleventh, two thousand and sixteen minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are now official. Metro council members in the audience, having had time to look around and see who's here, if you want to speak.
Councilwoman Johnson and Council Lady Vercher.
Any council member would like to speak? Could come to the microphone. Was there any others?
Council Lady Vercher.
Good afternoon, Chair McLean, Director Sloan, Deputy Lehman, and distinguished members of the commission. Councilwoman Karen Johnson, represent District twenty-nine. I'm here in support of items number seventeen and eighteen. Number seventeen specifically, to start off, I wanted to make part of the record that this property is owned by Jericho and not Men of Valor, and that Jericho is a for-profit, nonreligious Tennessee corporation. And the reduction of units as recommended for approval by the planning staff helps to address an appropriate change to impact our local traffic congestion in that area and the lack of infrastructure on this deadlocked particular road. It is surrounded by single-family homes, two schools, a community center, and churches, and this change will make the impact more manageable at this intersection. As for number eighteen, seventeen, I want everybody for the viewing audience to know that that is BL twenty sixteen dash one forty-one, and that's reducing the number of units on this PUD from sixty to thirty. I ask for your approval on that item, commissioners, and to uphold the staff recommendation to approve with conditions. Also, I'm here in support of number eighteen, and this particular plan, the fact that there was a traffic plan that had been omitted and was not part of the original approval, your approval of this staff recommendation to correct this would also be very much appreciated. That's BL twenty sixteen dash one forty. And at this time, that's all I have to say, and I hope that you will approve both of these items. Thank you.
Counsel Lady.
Good evening, thank you, commissioners. I stand before you again. I'm Council Lady Tanaka Vercher, representing one of the districts out in southeast Davison, District twenty-eight. I support staff's recommendation for agenda items number seventeen, which is two thousand four P dash oh oh four dash oh oh four and eighteen, two thousand four P dash oh oh four dash oh oh five. That's agenda item number eighteen. These are amendments for the Carrollton Station Plan Unit Development. Just want to give some background of how we arrived at this juncture. There was a community meeting held January seventh with over two hundred and fifty-plus neighbors, held at Antioch First Baptist Church. And also, many of you were here when our neighbors came and gave passionate testimonies before you at the January fourteenth Planning Commission Meeting as well, from southeast neighbors and business stakeholders. We were here until midnight, as you can recall. I recently held another community meeting, February twentieth, with over a hundred and fifty-plus neighbors at Apollo Middle School. Attendance for both of these meetings, as you can see, the numbers are really great, and the interest is really great amongst the community. These numbers are not inclusive to the number of phone calls and emails I have received regarding this matter. Well, I would like to note that the organization has yet to meet with the community, although offers have been extended. The amendments to the planned unit development, to the planned unit development for Carrollton Station is both thoughtful and factors in the community's interests, along with the developer, Jericho Projects LLC. These bills still afford the project to move forward. It does not attempt to alter the proposed use of the project, as you heard Council Lady Johnson before me reiterate, and as I expressed at the January fourteenth Planning Commission Meeting as well, that this bill has been inaccurate for the last eleven years. These amendments are efforts on our part to correct those inaccuracies. Also, it balances the growth for southeast Davison over the last eleven years, and it factors in not only the growth over the eleven years, but also the upcoming units that's coming out to the area, too. Many of you may be aware, we're getting ready to get over fifteen hundred units within close proximity of this corridor. We have not had infrastructure for this corridor, and there are six, seven streets that feeds into this as well. I ask that you vote in support of staff's recommendations of approval with conditions for two thousand four P oh oh four dash oh oh four, agenda item number seventeen, and vote in support of staff's recommendation of approval for two thousand four P oh oh four dash oh oh five, agenda item number eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members in the audience? Okay. We're going to have a Nashville Next update.
I'm Adams Carroll. I'm the Active Mobility Planner for the Nashville Planning Department. And for this week's Nashville Next Update, I'll be briefing you on the forthcoming updates to the strategic plan for sidewalks and bikeways. The strategic plan guides policy related to the expansion of Nashville's bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, and it provides decision support tools to help program capital funds for the construction of sidewalks and bikeways. The plan was partially updated in two thousand and eight, but much of the content remains in place from the original version that was adopted back in two thousand and three. Recognizing the age of this document, one of the recommendations in Nashville Next was a call for a new strategic plan that reflects the vision of the community that was expressed in Nashville Next, embraces new types of designs for sidewalks and bikeways that have evolved over the years since the original plan was adopted. A plan that's more coordinated with other metro investments, and importantly, one that improves the strategy and increases the transparency of how we use our capital funds for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. In October of two thousand and fifteen, Mayor Berry notified the council that Metro would act upon the recommendations of Nashville Next and begin work on an updated bicycle and pedestrian plan. Up to date, the collaboration on getting ready for this plan amongst the departments has been very high. The initial scope was drafted by an interdepartmental team that included representatives of Public Works, Planning, MTA, Parks and Greenways, Health, Schools, and others, other metro departments. Moving forward, Public Works will administer the project with assistance from Planning and a consultant team comprised of Alta Planning and Design, Civic Engineering, Hawkins Partners, and McNeely, Pigott, and Fox. The development of the plan will be guided by a steering committee that represents a cross-section of the metropolitan government and different community groups who have an interest in these items. Before I go any further, just a note about how the strategic plan for sidewalks and bikeways relates to other metro plans. As you all know, Nashville Next is a general plan, a very comprehensive plan, of which has many elements, including strategies for land use, housing, preservation, and more. One component of Nashville Next is Access Nashville two thousand and forty, which is our city's transportation plan. And it describes Nashville's long-term vision for our multimodal transportation system and creates strategic initiatives and identifies priority projects that achieve that vision. Within that, Nashville currently has four modal plans, which build upon the policy foundation expressed in Access Nashville two thousand and forty and provide shorter and medium-term steps on how to achieve that long-term vision. Of those four modal plans, Nashville's Major and Collector Street Plan, implementing complete streets, has been recently updated to align with Nashville Next, and an update to the city's transit plan in motion two thousand and fifteen is underway and nearing completion. So this year, as we begin updating both the strategic plans for sidewalk and bikeways and our Parks and Greenways master plan, there's a very concerted effort to make sure that all of the modal plans are mutually supportive, and ultimately working to implement the larger vision expressed in Nashville Next. We're working to make sure that all of our investments in transit, streets, sidewalks, bikeways, and greenways form a cohesive transportation network that supports Nashville's preferred future and gives people transportation options. The foundation of the plan will be public engagement, so we'll be using the model that was developed in Nashville Next and refined during end motion, including a variety of traditional engagement strategies like public meetings, surveys, interviews, and a speakers' bureau, but also more novel approaches like installing pilot projects at community events, digital interactive mapping tools that will help community members identify where sidewalks and bikeways are needed, and handlebar interviews on the street. Our goal is to collect input that is representative of a broad cross-section of the many diverse communities in Nashville and Davidson County, and their different needs for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. In addition to public engagement, other components of the plan that you can expect are a series of reports, including an audit of the current sidewalk and bikeway program, a peer city report, crash analysis, and a report of non-infrastructure activities like enforcement or encouragement that are needed to promote walking and biking. We'll see a major update to our GIS data on sidewalks and bikeways, and we'll also be hearing recommendations for data management protocol to make sure that those GIS assets stay up to date moving forward. We'll also have an analysis of missing links in the existing sidewalk and bikeway networks and an updated system for supporting decision-making on where bicycle and pedestrian improvements will be most valuable. All of those elements and more, taken together with the public input that we receive, will be used to develop a five-year plan of recommended capital projects for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And it will also include a financing strategy, looking at metro capital dollars, but also other sources of financing that are available. We want to use this tool, the five-year plan, to increase transparency about how Metro intends to spend capital funds for sidewalks and bikeways, but also to increase accountability to the public, and finally, to give direction to and increase our competitiveness whenever we go to seek additional funding through competitive grant programs that are available through state and federal and other sources. With our timeline, we're balancing a need to be very thorough in this update, but also trying to respond to the urgency that we're hearing from the mayor's office, from the council, from the thousands of participants of Nashville Next and others who are eager to see Nashville become more walkable and bikeable. So we kicked off the project this month, and we will be working on it throughout the year, but we do expect to have a final draft of the plan complete by December two thousand and sixteen. And because the plan will include recommendations about the use of public ways and the programming of capital funds, the final strategic plan will be referred to the Planning Commission for your review. We hope to have the document available for your consideration in January two thousand and seventeen. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions? Thank you. Bob, items on deferral or withdrawal?
Yes, there are several items for deferral, starting with item number six, case two thousand and sixteen SP dash zero one four dash zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from AR two A and CS to SP and AR two A zoning for portions of property located at seventy-four thirty-five Old Hickory Boulevard, and the recommendation is to defer to the March tenth Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is item seven A, case two thousand and five P dash zero zero eight dash zero zero seven. This is a request to amend the Harpeth Village PUD for property located at seventy-seven twenty-five Old Harding Pike and Temple Road unnumbered to add property into the overlay to permit twenty-five multifamily units. The recommendation is to defer to the March tenth Planning Commission Meeting. The associated case with that one is case, or item seven B, case number two thousand and fifteen Z dash oh ninety-six PR dash oh oh one. This is a request to rezone from RS forty to RM six for property at seventy-seven twenty-five Old Harding Pike, and the recommendation is to defer to March tenth. Next item is item eight. This is case two thousand and sixteen Z dash oh oh seven PR dash oh oh one. This is a request to rezone from RS twenty to R twenty zoning for properties located at forty-one oh one and forty-one oh five Leland Lane, and the recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item is item number nine, case eighty-five dash eighty-five P dash oh oh three. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of the Brentwood Commons PUD overlay district on property located at two thousand American General Way to permit an office development, and the staff recommendation is to defer to March tenth. And I will note on that one that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item is item ten, case two thousand and sixteen S dash oh twenty-five dash oh oh one. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on properties located at three hundred and three oh two Manchester Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item is item twelve, case two thousand and sixteen SP dash oh one one dash oh oh one. This is a request to rezone from AR two A and SP, from AR two A to SP zoning for properties located at Mount Pisgah Road unnumbered and six thousand and six oh two one Mount Pisgah Road to permit thirty-six single-family lots. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March tenth meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item fifteen, case two thousand and sixteen Z dash oh one eight PR dash oh oh one. This is a request to rezone from R six to MUL A zoning for property located at eleven seventeen Third Avenue South. The staff recommendation is to defer to the March tenth Planning Commission Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I also need to recuse myself from number nine.
Number nine, okay. So noted. The items on the deferral, request on deferral is item number six, seven A, seven B, eight, nine, ten, twelve, and fifteen. Is there a motion to accept those? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bob, items on consent?
Yes, and before I get to the consent items, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as noticed to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following cases into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these removed from the consent agenda. Starting with item number two, case two thousand and seven SP dash one oh three dash oh oh one. This is a request to amend the Harpeth Springs SP District for property located at seventy-nine sixty Coley Davis Road to permit sixty-four residential units where ninety-eight units were previously approved. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I will note on that item that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item on the consent list is item number five, case two thousand and sixteen SP dash zero one zero dash zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from RS five to SP zoning for property located at ten twenty-three Petway Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item eleven, case two thousand and sixteen Z dash zero zero four TX dash zero zero one. This is a request to amend section seventeen point oh four and seventeen point oh eight of the Metro Code, the zoning regulations pertaining to financial institutions and alternative financial services. Staff recommends approval with amendments. Next item is item thirteen, case two thousand and sixteen Z dash zero one six PR dash zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from R six to OR twenty A zoning for property located at seven fifty-three Alway Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item fourteen, case two thousand and sixteen Z dash oh one seven PR dash oh oh one. This is a request to rezone from R eight to IWD zoning for properties located at Brick Church Pike unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item nineteen, case two thousand and eight S dash oh sixty-one U dash twelve. This is a request to permit the extension of an approved concept plan for one year for the Brentwood Branch Estate subdivision for eight lots located at five oh one Broadwell Drive and Trousdale Drive unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve the extension of the concept plan approval to February twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. And then, under Other Business, item number twenty is an employee contract renewal for Anna Emerson. Recommendation is to approve. And then, item twenty-one, under Other Business, Amendment number two to Contract Number L dash twenty-eight eighty-eight between the Metro Government of Nashville and Davidson County and Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for professional services related to the conduct of the southeast-area transportation and land use study. Recommendation is to approve. And the last item is item twenty-five, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Commissioners, you've heard the request from the staff that the following items that I'll read off be considered on consent, item number two, number five, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-five. Need a motion to approve those if you so desire. Motion second, all in favor, or, yes, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Those items have been approved by the commission. The items that'll be heard today on public hearings are item number one A, one B, three, four, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from items one A and one B, and then also later item number four.
Okay, so noted.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Braves. I'm the Transportation Planner and Community Plans, and we have before you item number one A, which is a minor amendment to the Major and Collector Street Plan along Westend Avenue. The applicant's request is to amend the associated right-of-way width from a hundred and two feet to ninety feet, and staff recommendation is to approve the minor amendment only related to the subject properties which are outlined in red. The Major and Collector Street Plan identifies Westend Avenue as an arterial boulevard, which is shown in red. Bowling Avenue and Elmington Avenue are collector avenues shown in purple. The remaining streets in the area are local streets. Proposed future right-of-way widths are associated with the Major and Collector Street Plan designations. The right-of-way width along Westend Avenue is identified as a hundred and two feet to meet future needs. The development's initial application requested reducing the right-of-way width from a hundred and two feet to eighty-seven feet and keeping the existing three-foot grass strip and five-foot sidewalk. Planning staff analyzed the area between Bowling Avenue and Craighead Avenue, and in response to staff concerns, the applicant has amended their request to dedicate three feet of right-of-way, which would accommodate a five-foot grass strip and six-foot sidewalk. This would be within the ninety feet of right-of-way and apply only to the subject properties outlined in red. This photo shows the existing conditions along the site. This is looking west towards St. Thomas Hospital along Westend Avenue. And then this is looking back east along the site. This is towards downtown. The cross-section depicts the existing conditions shown on the screen. On the side of the proposed development, there's an existing three-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk, and there's about eighty-seven feet of right-of-way along the The Major and Collector Street Plan outlines the future vision for Nashville's streets and links the different transportation modes to inform public right-of-way needs. With the adoption of Nashville Next, the Major and Collector Street Plan was updated to reflect changes in character, context, and transportation components. And so as redevelopment occurs, we anticipate adding a well-designed street side, which is highlighted in the red box, and that's composed of an eight-foot grass strip and six-foot sidewalk, and that complements the urban residential character of the corridor. This increases the grass strip from three feet to eight feet and sidewalk width from five feet to six feet. Chapter two of the Major and Collector Street Plan provides guidance on the flexibility involving the design guidelines with a more context-sensitive approach, mostly related to site-specific conditions. The development's initial application proposed leaving the existing street side conditions, and that is shown on the left in figure one with a three-foot grass strip and five-foot sidewalk. However, the existing conditions do not meet the intent of the Major and Collector Street Plan shown in figure two with an eight-foot grass strip and a six-foot sidewalk. Figure three depicts our updated proposal, and the development has proposed increasing from existing conditions the grass strip width from three feet to five feet and increasing the sidewalk width from five feet to six feet. This requires three feet of right-of-way dedication resulting in ninety feet of right-of-way at the development site. The applicant has also indicated that this block of Westend Avenue poses unique conditions needing flexibility within the Major and Collector Street Plan guidelines. And these are related to three challenges. One involves the requirements for stormwater on-site with the presence of a historic wall nearby and the need for a retaining wall. Two is the rise in topography from the existing sidewalk to the rear of the property. And three, the nearby structures on the north side of Westend Avenue, which are likely to remain because of historical significance, and so this will likely keep the existing street side on those properties. Planning staff assessment is that the proposed five-foot grass strip and six-foot sidewalk meets the intent of the Major and Collector Street Plan, given the unique conditions of the site. They have submitted a revised final subdivision plat that indicates the dedication of three feet of right-of-way, and this is item one B on your agenda. Staff recommends approval of the minor amendment to the Major and Collector Street Plan only for properties at thirty-six oh six and thirty-six twenty-two Westend Avenue to match the associated final subdivision plat indicating a dedication of three feet of right-of-way.
Item one B on your agenda is the associated subdivision plat for the Welch Property Subdivision, Section two. This is a request to create twenty-seven lots and dedicate easements. Staff recommendation is to approve the variance request and approve the plat with conditions if the associated plan amendment is approved. The property is located at thirty-six oh six and thirty-six twenty-two Westend Avenue, east of Craighead Avenue. The existing zoning of the property is RM forty for the property fronting on Westend Avenue and RS seven point five for the property to the rear. The property to the rear here, fronting on Richland, is also within the Richland Westend Neighborhood Conservation District. The plan as proposed proposes twenty-seven, the plat as proposed proposes twenty-seven lots, one lot along Richland Avenue here, and twenty-six lots along Westend Avenue. Lots one oh one through one thirteen have frontage on Westend Avenue, and lots one forty-six through one twenty-six have front, I'm sorry, one twenty-six through one forty-six have frontage along a private alley here to the rear. A series of private alleys are proposed to be dedicated- A series of private alleys are proposed to be dedicated with easements here and here, providing access to the lots. Additionally, a series of stormwater bioswells are proposed here along the frontage of the property. The applicant is requesting a variance from the subdivision regulations. Section 3, 4 of the subdivision regulations addresses frontage for lots. If lots front onto open space, the lots are required to have a pedestrian connection from the front of each residential unit to the sidewalk. The applicant is requesting a variance from this request. For the lots fronting on the private alley here, an internal private sidewalk is proposed here at the front of the units. They will have connections connecting from the private sidewalk to the public sidewalk along West End Avenue. Additionally, for the lots fronting on West End Avenue, a private sidewalk is proposed here with four connections providing connection to the sidewalk along West End Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the variance. The property is uniquely situated, given the stormwater management needs along the front of the property and the topography of the site sitting higher on West End Avenue. Given the internal network of sidewalks with multiple connections to the public sidewalk and given the improvements being made to the sidewalk along West End Avenue and the grass strip, the variances are appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the variance request and approval of the plat with conditions if the associated plan amendment is approved.
Me, you, and Kelly, I'll try to turn it my way.
Signal that's over. Item's helping the public here, and the applicant be allowed 10 minutes to make a presentation. If you'd like, you know, two back for rebuttal.
Yes, I'd like to hold some for rebuttal. Alan Thompson with Reagan Smith &amp; Associates. Good evening, Chairman, good evening, Commissioners. The Welch College Project has been looked at over a course of 23 years by multiple developments and developers that either did not meet the college requirements or this property's requirements or the neighborhood's requirements. Since the spring of 2015, just approximately a year ago, we have worked on this project within Councilman Holloman, worked with the Welch College representatives, as well as the neighborhood representatives at the time. We've had several concepts through on this project, and in doing so, we have come up with what you see here today. And we had a neighborhood meeting that had approximately 150 in attendance back in May of 2015. All but one, when asked for a vote on the floor of support of this project, were four. So, we have overwhelming support from the neighbors. We originally looked at this site for a 69-unit condominium flat. We did not feel that that was in characteristic of this neighborhood or the West End frontage. We have landed on 26 brownstone units, which is much more within the fabric of West End and this neighborhood. So, we felt like this was much more appropriate for this particular site. That being said, we'd mentioned one of the hardships was storm drainage. There is no storm drainage within West End all the way until you get down to MBA, which is a significant ways off from us. The nearest storm drainage in Richland is 1,000 feet to our west. That being said, the current storm drainage all flows, sheet flows across asphalt. There's about three acres of this site that is impervious. It goes into Richland and runs to our west 1,000 feet. With the improvement that we're seeing here, we would be looking at capturing that water, which is currently not being detained or clean. It would then be detained in our alleyway, which will be a permeable paver system, which will store that water, slow it down, and cool it down and promote infiltration. In addition to that, we will have over 20 bioswells on the brownstones alone. The single-family lots just to the north of it will have over 22 rain gardens involved. So, we will be going from a three-acre impervious area to a 2.35 acre impervious area, reduction of .65. So, we're making a significant improvement. I say all that, every inch counts in this type of infill approach. And as we've worked with staff on this amendment that we are requesting with Mr. Briggs, we feel like we have come to an appropriate solution that will address West End in a fashion that it should be and accommodate the future circulation of pedestrians along that corridor. One of the struggles with that is we do not see the ability for the sidewalk from the west of our site going along West End being able to ever meet this requirement due to our neighbor's parking garage being immediately underneath or right to the back of sidewalk. Beyond that is the Welch College Library, which in an agreement with the neighbors, the college put that library in a historic preservation area, and it has a wall immediately behind the sidewalk that falls within that historic preservation overlay. Just to the west of Craighead is West End Close. For them to implement this particular sidewalk system would be removing 12 to 20 some-odd residents from their homes in order to make that work. So, that being said, we feel like the compromise in working with staff was very appropriate and will work very well for this particular site. We will be reducing our access points on the West End from four to a single access point. With that said, we would very much appreciate your support. We agree with all staff comments and would be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
You've got two minutes reserved for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in support?
I don't know what button to push. Is it on? Okay. Councilwoman Kathleen Murphy, District 24, 231 Orlando Avenue. I wanted to start by thanking the Planning Department staff. I know that this project has been going on for a very long time, probably multiple generations of planning staffers. And so, I know that they've really looked at this to make sure that we're making the best decision for the area. The neighbors of Richland West End Neighborhood Association have worked on getting the best outgun for this property for at least 23 years, and they've held a number of meetings over that year, over the past year, and community meetings that have regarded this property that I attended while I was, as a candidate last year. I was at the meeting that he spoke about having 150 people there that voted on this project. And so, I appreciate their hard work and dedication to keeping this neighborhood great. That Neighborhood Association, Richland West End, has written a letter to me, and I believe that it should be in your files, that endorsed these two items and asked for your approval, and their president will speak after I do. Many members in the Whitland Neighborhood Association have reached out to you as well, I believe, and including their current president, who's written a letter today that should be in your files and has communicated with me, expressing support of the Richland West End Neighborhood Association position and of this project. I really feel like this request to amend the Major and Collector Street Plan reflects the reality of West End Avenue on this block. It allows, allowing this amendment will improve the sidewalks and the walkability along this corridor. The request to create the 27 lots and dedicated easement allows for this property to develop in a way that the neighborhood not only supports but has been a cheerleader for. As well as, as you see in your packets, the Historic Zoning Commission has recommended for approval. I said this about a project on another part of my district, that very rarely are you going to get so much support behind one project. And I really think that the development team has done a lot of due diligence to get everyone behind their project. You're not going to make everyone happy, but I really think that this project proceeding the way that it is with the townhomes is the best solution for this lot at this time, considering the historic overlay and other parts of this district. So, I thank you for your time, and I respectfully ask for your approval on both of these items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Michael Linseth, and I'm at 3533 Richland Avenue, resident there, and I'm the neighborhood president. I just want to say that we, our neighborhood is in favor of this project, I believe. There's a letter in y'all's packet that's been overwhelming support, this neighborhood. I'm new to the neighborhood, but I have history there. And yeah, for 20 years, they've gone through different, different things trying to get this project approved. And I sincerely believe that the character of what Ford is doing with the brownstones will add to West End. So, with that, I really appreciate y'all's approval of the two amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in support? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Come to the microphone, give us your name and...
Good afternoon, I'm Margot Chambers. I'm at 3803 Princeton Avenue, and I do live in the Richland West End neighborhood. I have concerns the proposed right-of-way reduction near 3606 West End will constrain the streets. I have concerns this commission could grant approval to constrain a state highway, a highway identified through the Nashville Next process as being reserved for high-capacity transit use, and all for the need for one developer. I don't believe this is in the best interest of a regional planning commission. The Major and Collector Street Plan amendment lacks a T-dot survey. There's insufficient evidence presented to the public about the size of the existing row at this location. There have been no community meetings held. The public has been told about the Major and Collector Street Plan. The public has been told by their elected official this amendment impacts one site, one side of the street, and in one neighborhood. The analysis presented does not mention the applicant's request, which is to amend the standard row of 102 to 87 feet, I'm sorry, on a constrained system. No one's talked about why this is or isn't a constrained system. The row reduction would occur at a critical point on the Memphis-Bristol State Highway within a few feet of a full interchange of I-440. The public has not been told how this will impact that. A change to the row, which, this is going to change the center line, which affects the setback measuring point for mixed-use buildings in the subdivision, and the attached case involves a mixed-use building inside a subdivision. That case lacks a concept plan, and it needs, this would not appear to meet subdivision regulations. I'm referencing Metro Charter, Chapter 5, Section 11, 504, where if there's a conflict between a local and a municipal and a regional planning commission that you have to rule with, for a local commission, please vote to disapprove.
Thank you.
Disapprove, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jim Knight. I'm a resident of Parsh Hill, 6212 Hillsborough Pike. I simply am unaware of what the change of the right-of-way would do, but it seems not so much a community issue, but rather an issue of all of the residents of Nashville and Davidson County. And I would ask you to disapprove this measure and not reduce the right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant be allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, we agree with the council lady with the neighborhood and be happy to answer any questions of the planning commission.
Thank you. Clear the public hearing closed, and Derek?
Looking at this, it seems to be a well-thought-out plan. Secondly, I think they've worked well with the community in general to identify any potential issues. As a result, I plan on supporting staff's recommendations.
Jeff?
I too will support this. This has been a long struggle to get an acceptable plan, both for the college and the neighborhood, and I think they've arrived at it with very good compromises.
Jessica?
So, I guess I just have one quick question for staff, and that was just looking, is there a reason we didn't consider this for the entire block? Do we run the risk of some inconsistency down the road? And would it be better to think about this for the entire?
Sure, we did look at the segment between, it was Bowling and...
Craighead?
And we thought just, because there is an opportunity for other development to come in, either across the street or further down, just depending on what happens to those properties in the future, we thought just, given the unique conditions on this site, that it's appropriate only to these properties. Whereas other, other properties would be, we would be looking to get the full sidewalk requirements.
Okay. I agree with what has already been said. It sounds like there's been good neighborhood communication and support, and I vote, I will vote to support this as well.
Council lady?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions just for clarification. Can you explain the difference between the Major and Collector Street Plan and the existing right-of-way and what is actually happening here? And also to say specifically whether this is narrowing the existing street?
Okay. Let's, if you don't mind, I'll probably scroll back to our graphic. Good to come up. So, this is showing the pavement width as it is today with five lanes. What the Major and Collector Street Plan envisions is that as redevelopment occurs, we improve the walkability, and it's kind of a piecemeal effort, but as a whole block ends up being changed, you begin to get the more completed components for people walking. What's shown here would ideally be 102 feet of right-of-way. What's out there today is basically the pavement width that is there, so the five lanes, and then it has the smaller grass strip and the five-foot sidewalk on each side.
And the right-of-way runs from the back edge of the sidewalk to the back edge of the opposite sidewalk?
Correct.
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 And so, it's not currently 102 feet?
Right. Today, it's 87 per the plat that the applicant provided. And so, when they build the sidewalk, it would be a three-foot right-of-way dedication to the back of the sidewalk.
Okay. And then, so, the rest of the length of the street is probably also similarly 87 feet at this point, or is it?
Most likely. You'll notice when you look at parcel lines, you'll see notches out along certain blocks, and that's where more right-of-way has gotten for various reasons.
Okay, gotcha. So, but it is not narrowing the street that is there today?
Correct.
Okay. And then, if you can go back to that picture that shows the neighboring properties, again, just that one, yes. So, the consultant was referring to the properties, looking at this picture, sort of working your way left, that actually have also reasons that would make it very difficult to go any wider, risk bars right-of-way. Can you talk us through those?
Yes, Richland Place, where he has the arrow there, that is a multifamily site. What you're looking at is a parking, surface parking there, but it goes down below grade, and there's a subgrade parking garage, which from our indications, come right up to the back of that sidewalk currently. So, you'd be extending sidewalk either to it or over it in that particular case, so I'm not sure from a structural standpoint. And then, if you go to the corner of Craighead where the library is, that's where we dedicated a historic overlay on top of the library. Along the backside of that sidewalk, they have a stone wall, which is part of that historic campus, and we would not want to see that removed.
And does state law protect historic stone walls along state highways?
I'm not sure. I know that the whole campus of that particular corner site falls within what the school has now dedicated as a historic preservation area, overlay.
Great.
So, Metro Law would protect it. And then, as you go just to the other side of Craighead, this is probably the most significant issue. This is a West End Close, and their actual buildings are literally feet off the back of that sidewalk that we are currently lined up with. So, the likelihood of that ever going and meeting this section that we're talking about is very unlikely.
So, that's four properties in a row that...
Well, three.
Three existing, and then we're adding to that these two.
Yeah. So, going to the west would not, if we built to the entire extent of the sidewalk, there would be a significant, very visible inconsistency there. The compromise we made was about a four-and-a-half-foot compromise, but where we gave a little bit, and we got a five-foot grass strip along West End, you know, adding another two foot to the three, and then we're going from a five-foot sidewalk to a six-foot sidewalk, so we have a larger volume along that pathway. And it gives us to where we're not so far out of line that those transition points are appropriate and won't look so much out of character as to what's there today.
More of a meander in the sidewalk, then?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then there was, there was a mention of something about the center line moving, and I just don't know enough about how, what center line means, and if that's the center of the street, or, can you explain what the implications of that might be?
Sure. So throughout much of the county, your zoning dictates a little bit of your setback, combined with the right-of-way that's identified in the Major and Collector Street Plan. So there is an amount, and in this case, it's 102 feet. It's typically half of that, which gets you at the center line, plus whatever the zoning is, 10, 15, 20 feet, to get you the building setback. In this instance, they have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they have already set the setback for this, I believe at 28 feet, from the existing property line. So this is not impacting the measuring of the setback.
And would it impact the property on the other side? Does that shift in center line, do something to the other side of the street?
My understanding is codes is interpreted, in this case, that it's contextual, so it's in the urban zoning overlay, so they're looking at the sandborne maps to identify where the proper building placement is.
Okay, so that stays.
Yeah.
Okay. And I would say, again, I have watched the neighborhood look at many different proposals that have come up through the years, and most have been really bad. And as they've gotten closer and closer to something acceptable, it's exciting to me to see something that the neighbors have actually embraced, and that has worked with the historic preservation of that historic neighborhood. So I know it would be great to have something totally perfect, but this is, this seems pretty darn close, so I will support it.
Jennifer?
I don't think I have anything to add. One question was about the impervious, just for information purposes. You said you were going to have a reducing amount of the impervious...
Yeah, the alleyways that were reflected earlier. Every alleyway will be impervious pavement, much like you, permeable pavers, like you see out here in the parking lot in front of the planning department. So with that, underneath those permeable pavers, you have a volume to where you can now detain the water, which is currently sheet-flowing directly off of asphalt and into Richland Avenue. So water that's going there now will be held, promoted through infiltration into the ground system. All rooftop water will go through either a bio-swell or a rain garden, and we're going to have about 40 in total across the entire, this entire campus.
And what I've heard, nothing's going to change on the street side, so you have the bike lane will still be able to, as the bike lane is into the plan, you're still not going to impact that, it's just sidewalks.
Correct.
And you're going to have more sidewalk.
We'll increase the capacity along our frontage and the sidewalk. Our sidewalk will be six-foot, where the sidewalk to East and West will be five.
Okay. I support, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there a motion? We'll vote on these separately. Is there a motion on 1A?
Salute.
Second.
Motion second to approve 1A, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion on 1B?
Second.
Motion second on 1B to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those who've been taking care of, item number three is next on the public hearing.
Item number three on your agenda is a request for rezoning for 4500 Illinois Avenue. The request is to rezone to permit up to two residential units. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The site is located at 4500 Illinois Avenue on the north side of Illinois and east of 46th Avenue North. Oh, sorry. Yes. Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Bring the people back in.
Yes. Okay. I will wait until there's...
Hold on, it's down.
Okay, item three. Item three is a request for rezoning at 4500 Illinois Avenue. This is a request to permit up to two residential units. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The site is located at 4500 Illinois Avenue on the north side of Illinois and east of 46th Avenue North. The site is approximately .17 acres in size and is vacant. The existing zoning, which is R6, would allow for one unit on the lot today. The plan proposes two detached single-family units to have access from the alley. A sidewalk is proposed from the front of each unit to the street. Currently, there is no sidewalk along this portion of Illinois Avenue. The applicant has proposed architectural standards and has provided conceptual elevations. The architectural standards include raised foundations, provisions for window orientation, specific building material prohibitions as well. The existing zoning of the property is R6. In all R zoning districts, two-family dwellings are only allowed if certain conditions are met. The conditions are as follows. The lot is illegally created and is of record in the Office of the County Register prior to August 1, 1984. The lot is created by a subdivision of a parcel of land in existence prior to that same date, and to no more than three lots, or it's part of a subdivision having preliminary approval from the planning commission before August 1984. R6 zoning allows for a mixture of one-family, two-family, and detached accessory dwelling units. Not all lots are intended to allow for two-family units or detached accessory dwelling units. The district is not intended for one singular housing type on all lots. The lot at 4500 Illinois Avenue was property that was previously platted as public right-of-way. The right-of-way was abandoned in 1992, and the lot was platted in 2014. Therefore, the lot was not a legally existing lot or parcel prior to 1984. And because it was just platted in 2014, it does not meet the conditions of the zoning code in order to be eligible for two units. The policy of the property is T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance. The rezoning is not consistent with the policy. The policy is intended to preserve the general character of existing urban neighborhoods. And while there are two-family dwellings within the neighborhood, the zoning does not anticipate that all lots within an R zoning district will be eligible for two-family units. A mix of one, two, and detached accessory dwelling units is appropriate within an R zoning district. Staff recommends disapproval, as the existing zoning is, again, intended to create a mixture of dwelling units. The lot in question could be, is eligible for a single-family, and also because of the existence of an alley, could have a detached accessory dwelling unit. It would be inappropriate to utilize an SP to avoid a specific section of the zoning code when an option is available to provide alternative mixture of housing units.
Turn your mic off, please. Thank you. Item is open for public hearing.
Sorry. Sorry.
Item's open for public hearing. Does applicant be allowed 10 minutes? He may hold two back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. My name is Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates. This is sort of complicated, but it's sort of simple, too. First, let me say that I think I'm aware that this is not as cut and dry as probably that presentation was presented. I think that there's a lot of debate about this. I've handed you something out that will probably help you a little bit, and within that handout I gave you, I think of the front of it, it shows more or less the street. And it shows, this lot that we're talking about's the lot that's vacant. It's in the center of the page, and it's white. And if you look, you'll see, I've written R and D. This is in the nations where lots have been reestablished. And so most of these lots, only two or three of them actually, with the exception of two or three, are reestablished lots. And so they're basically all single-family lots. To say that there's duplexes up and down the street, there are none. They've all been developed as single-family houses, or they've been repetitioned into individual lots. So, you know, that sort of blows my mind just a little bit. So I think it's unintentional, probably, that comment. I guess if you have a duplex lot and you put two single-family houses on them, you detach them, maybe you still consider those to be two-family dwellings, but they're not. They look just like the rest of the partitioned-off lots on the street. As a matter of fact, the lot that's adjacent to this, you can see it on that drawing on the screen right there, you can see the proposal that I'm doing right here, which is a, basically a duplex lot, where you're going to have two houses that are separated, all up and down the street, the houses look identical, they're just on separate 25-foot lots. So I hope that makes some kind of sense. So to say that this is contrary to the neighborhood maintenance policy, I don't see how you make that argument at all. These buildings fall directly in line with what's there. I took the council member out here, actually, I had originally submitted two different SPs. One for, was for another lot on Pennsylvania Avenue, which was also an abandoned right-of-way. We went to codes originally, and we asked codes to make an interpretation on whether these 50-foot abandoned lots would be duplex eligible. I'll say duplex eligible, I guess that's what we, what we seem to call these, although they're going to be separate units, they're detached units. And codes has been very inconsistent on their determination of what's eligible and what's not. We've got some down the street that were considered eligible, but the one I submitted on Pennsylvania Avenue, I didn't realize was eligible, but after I submitted it, code said, "You're eligible to appeal two houses on it." Well, it was an abandoned right-of-way. I didn't understand that. So I took the council member out there, we looked at it on Saturday, one Saturday, and I took her to the lot on Pennsylvania, I took her to the lot on Illinois, we looked at them both. Well, the lot on Pennsylvania had some slope on it, although it was allowed to build two houses on it, we decided, you know what, we need to put the single-family house there. And so I called my client, and I basically said, "Although it looks like you're allowed to put two here, you need to put one." Because if you separate two buildings, and you have a foot, three-foot setback on the side with all this slope, it's just not going to work. So the council member and I looked at the one on Illinois. It's perfect. And you can look at the photos on the second page, and you'll see, it's a flat lot, it's got alley access to the rear, you can look down the street, you can see all the houses that are being built are on these reestablished lots. The next photo, if you look at, the last photo, is a view of the same lot from across the street, and you'll see what happens on lots that are duplex eligible. They can go get a permit, they can build anything they want to build, they can build three stories, they can put alley access off the rear, and park in the front, and put a fence, a privacy fence in the front. That's what you can do. So, from my perspective, you know, any zoning is going to conflict with the, any rezoner and any SP, obviously, we wouldn't be doing SP zoning if it didn't require it. The existing zoning doesn't allow me to do something, I'm going to do an SP. So the argument that you're allowed to do something today, well, I want to do something different. I want to put two houses on there, just like every other lot on the street. So, so there's two remedies to that. One would be to go to the zoning code and amend the zoning ordinance so that when an interpretation comes up on these vacant lots, it's easier for codes to make that determination. So I could do a text change, but the text change may affect lots all across Davidson County. I don't want to do that. So the best thing for me to do is simply file an SP. And with the SP, you know what you get? You get architectural requirements. I can limit this to two stories, I can limit the architectural materials, I can require you to park off the alley, I can require you not to put a fence in the front, I can require you not to have parking in the front. So from my perspective, the SP is a tool that helps me actually create two individual buildings on one lot that match every other individual building on one lots down the street, and provide all the architectural control that we need that the others simply don't provide. And you'll see down the street, or if you're familiar with the area, and you see a lot of these partitioned 25-foot lots, some of these are three-story buildings. They're ridiculous. Now, if you look at the picture again, and you look what's on both sides of me, if I put a single-family house there, to me, it's going to look out of place. It's going to be totally out of character with what's there. And so that would be my argument. I think some would agree, maybe a few would disagree. Maybe we try to apply land use policy too strictly. I'm beginning to think that. I think the common sense has gone out the window a little bit, and I think that's the way you need to look at it. What makes sense here? Does it make sense? Does it make sense to you put a SP zoning on there and highly restrict this property and get exactly what you need? I think so. I know the council member thinks so. I hate to see her go to the council with a bill that's disapproved unanimously by the planning commission. I don't think that's fair to her. I'm sure she'd be here, she'd probably tell you the same thing. She told me before I even came today, "Roy, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it. Don't be so serious about it." Well, you know, I am serious about it, because I feel strongly about what I presented here. And I think it's a disservice to her to not listen to what I'm saying and what she's saying. I think that this should be approved, as submitted, and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
Thanks.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Clear the public hearing closed.
I've got two minutes.
So you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
I thought that, you know, maybe somebody'd say something, but, boy, I'm not going to rebut. I'm just going to say again, the council member is in support of this.
For another speech.
Yeah, I can't speak?
Rebuttal, please.
Okay, fine. I didn't take all my eight.
You've got your speech prepared, I want to hear it.
No. I was just, I was repeating myself, there's no need to do that.
Okay, thank you. Hunter, I'm going to start with you.
Well, you know, when we look at this site plan, and, you know, I think a lot of things come to mind, the tall skinnies, you know, come to mind immediately. And so it wasn't until what I just heard was a relatively compelling argument in this particular location, in this neighborhood, on this street, with its existing context, to make me really think hard about what the applicants, the argument that the applicant's making. You know, in, you know, in five years, we may see these homes all the way up and down the street, because the lots have already been reestablished to those narrower lots. And, you know, I do think the SP gives us an opportunity here to control some things that normally we wouldn't be allowed to control. And with, the smaller these lots get, and the smaller, the narrower the homes get, it does seem to begin to make some sense that we want a little more control on what we're doing. So I'm eager to hear what my colleagues have to say, but, you know, but I tend to feel like that it's a pretty compelling case, and an unusual case, for sure. I mean, we've seen similar things like this before, and they just didn't make sense to apply an SP kind of in the middle of a neighborhood like this, but I think it might here.
Jennifer?
So, one question. The lot next to the current lot, is that a, is that a single lot with two structures on it?
It is. That is considered a duplex. So the definition of a two-family or duplex, per our zoning code, says that they can be attached or detached. It has to do with the number of units on a lot. And so that is two units. Now, it looks like kind of two lots, but essentially what that is, is a horizontal property regime, which is a method of sales, and so it shows up as kind of a, two boxes on the overall property, but is that one lot per, for, under zoning consideration.
So essentially, this current proposal is the same, what he's, as the applicant's saying, it's pretty much the same thing as what's next door?
Yep.
But additional, adding sidewalks?
Right, yes.
Okay. I'm interested to hear what everyone else has to say. I see there are single families, and I understand why the staff recommended disapproval, simply because there are other things that could be built here, but that doesn't necessarily mean, just because other things could be built here, that other things would be built here. I mean, clearly, he's got a plan to build something with sidewalks, and I'll be interested to hear what everyone else has to say.
Councilor Lady?
Thank you. I guess I'm always a little hesitant to SP a single lot in the midst of something that feels a little bit like spot zoning. And, you know, usually when we do this, it's because it's owned RS, and you don't have any options. It seems interesting to me that there is the option to do a single-family home with a detached accessory dwelling unit, which has the opportunity to create a mix of housing types, which is something that's supported in Nashville Next. So it does seem like there are other options there. I appreciate the, you know, the control that an SP gives you. I mean, I think our requirements with regard to height versus width on duplexes will probably have some impact on the total height, so there is a little bit of control there. So I'm not sure that that is something that's necessarily as important at this thing. At this point, I tend to support the staff, just because it seems like there are some good options that can be done with this, that would support some of the principles of Nashville Next that are near... would support some of the principles of Nashville Next that are near and dear to my heart.
Stuart?
I do see, I do see the point of not overusing SP, particularly for just on a case-by-case, lot-by-lot basis. But I also frankly think Mr. Dale has made a very compelling case as well.
Thank you. Derek?
Jeff?
No comments.
Jessica?
So I'm just trying to understand why they could build the way they could next door, but they can't build here.
Okay. So in the R zoning district, lots are allowed to have one family, or one-family and two-family are permitted uses. Two-family are only permitted if certain conditions are met. The first thing is, is that the lot has to meet the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance in regards to the size. And so in this district, for instance, it would have to be a minimum of 6,000 square feet. If you don't meet that standard, you're automatically kind of, no, no two-family. Secondly, what the codes department looks at when they're issuing building permits is when the lot was legally created. And it had to have been legally created and of record prior to August 1, 1984. Or it has to be subdivided from a lot that was legally created prior to that date. So essentially, if you have a larger lot that was legally created prior to '84, you subdivide it once, those lots may both still be duplex eligible. If the lot is not legally created prior to July 1, 1984, then it's not eligible for a duplex. This lot was previously right-of-way.
Got it.
And it wasn't abandoned until 1992. And so it wasn't a legal parcel prior to being abandoned, essentially.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, you know, in a perfect world, if you'd ask me what I would want to see on this street, I wouldn't want to see a whole row of these houses. But I also would guess that nobody really knew that this was a parcel that was, you know, formerly right-of-way and was somehow going to be treated differently than any other parcel on that street. You know, the second picture that was provided really does let you know that this is kind of the context that's been established for this neighborhood. And I agree with the concern around spot zoning, but I also think there's a lot of unique characteristics associated with this lot that might make it, you know, make us reconsider. You know, again, I do struggle with, it's all over the street, and I don't see why we would, this one lot would necessarily be treated differently. And the fact that we do have some controls over it, we're not going to have parking in front of the house. I mean, things that will make it a nicer streetscape, to me, make it a more compelling case to support.
Do you have other comments, or is there a motion?
You missed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're jumping around. I know you were expecting me over there.
I won't do that on the western end. I'll go right in order. Okay, Lee, I'd like to hear from you.
So just to make sure I'm articulating the staff's analysis correctly. So it's, this is apparently inconsistent with the urban neighborhood maintenance policy because it doesn't, it's not consistent with the general character of the neighborhood, which it kind of is, if you look at the picture. But because it's not, doesn't meet those zoning conditions, it's not consistent with the general character of the neighborhood?
Well, neighborhood maintenance areas are, or the neighborhood maintenance policy is intended to preserve the general character of the neighborhood. And the general character of this neighborhood is a mixture of housing types. And so there are some two-family, there are some single-family. So there is a mixture of housing types. And so, you know, a neighborhood maintenance isn't intended, especially in an R zoning district, for every lot to be in the same type of use. And so it would be inconsistent in that manner, in that it's intended for a mixture of uses within the R zone.
So it's inconsistent because it's not giving a mixture, or?
Well, it would, I mean, it's just that, it's inconsistent in that the neighborhood maintenance isn't intended for every lot to be the same.
Okay.
You know, and there is currently a mixture of housing types, and there's the ability to develop this with a mixture of housing types. And so rezoning it just to avoid a specific provision of the zoning ordinance is not, is not appropriate.
Okay, I got you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Other comments, or is there a motion?
I have a motion. It's, it's, it's a very unusual, unusual situation, because our zoning has always been different in my mind than what we've been thinking of today a little bit. I think, somehow, when I was first on this commission, in a different century. At any rate, I'm convinced that under all the facts presented, this makes some sense, and I would move we approve the rezoning request.
I was going to point out that if you do approve it, we did have some conditions in the staff report for sort of our standard SP conditions that would go along with it if you do approve.
I meant to say that.
Okay, got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is a request for the commission to consider a zone change on Old Burkitt Road. Properties outlined in red, request to specifically permit 99 single-family lots. Staff is recommending that the request be deferred to the March 10 Planning Commission meeting or disapproved. The department, or the planning staff's recommendation is based on the fact that a TIS has not been approved, or traffic impact study. The applicant was notified of the requirement in January. The TIS was not submitted until this Tuesday. The existing zoning is AR2A. This would permit up to 13 units, consisting of 11 lots and two duplex lots. This is the proposed SP. Again, it's for 99 single-family lots. Contains 59 front-loaded lots and 40 alley-loaded. It provides different minimum lot size standards for alley and front-loaded lots. Also provides different standards for the width of alley and front-loaded lots. The max height for any individual home is three stories and 40 feet. It also provides architectural standards, including glazing raised foundations. It also has standards for garages that would be at the, along the front-loading unit to be recessed from the street. Also provides standards for access into the front-loaded lots. Also provides for future connectivity to the east and to the west. Sidewalks are provided on all sides of all new streets. And again, the traffic impact study for this project has not been reviewed or approved. The reason that the traffic impact study is important in this situation is because of the, let me go through this real quick. So this is in the southeast community plan. The policy is conservation and suburban neighborhood evolving. For all sense and purposes, the policy is neighborhood evolving. Policy supports all types of residential development, including multifamily or single-family. Overall, staff finds that this request could be consistent with the policy. However, again, we're wanting to see a traffic impact study to see how, any conditions that are in that study after public works would impact the overall plan. This is looking down Old Burkitt Road, so it pretty much functions as a driveway, and this is the reason that the traffic impact study is important. This is another, the yellow line is where the project entrance would be located. This is another view, and another view. And one update is that we did receive, or the fire marshal has indicated in an email sent to me, that they could recommend approval of the plan under certain conditions, which the applicant indicated they were, they were okay with, but those requirements would require them to make modifications to the plan. So this would not be the current plan that you would see, which, again, is another reason why we feel that this should be deferred to March 10. So the planning staff, public works can review everything and make sure that all the improvements that are needed to make work for everyone. So in conclusion, staff is recommending deferral to the March 10 or disapproval. Thank you.
Let me ask you. Jason, we could hear this, and we could vote on it and approve, subject to the modification of the fire marshal's requirements and a traffic impact study?
You could do that. However, I mean, we do not know what those conditions would be. There is a traffic impact study that was submitted. I have looked over some of the recommendations of the traffic impact study, which requires that the road be widened. However, knowing what the right-of-way is actually is out there today, I'm not 100% certain they can even meet the requirements that are in the traffic impact study. And again, those aren't requirements that public works has issued or the traffic engineer. They're based off the applicant's traffic engineer. And so those need to be reviewed as public works may not agree to those. They may add other conditions to those.
Okay. Why was this not on the deferral earlier request?
The applicant wish, did not wish to defer. And I will also say that they are wanting to stay on track for the May council public hearing. Deferring one meeting would keep them on track for that, that meeting. So that would give us a little more time to review their traffic impact study.
Is the applicant here today? And what your wish is to hear it, or to defer it one meeting?
Here.
Here today. Okay. Okay. Okay, so the applicant be allowed 10 minutes, public hearing's open. Applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and then you can hold two back for rebuttal if you'd like.
My name is David McGowan. I'm president of Regent Homes. We developed Lake Village in this particular part of town. We also developed part of Burkitt Place, Burkitt Springs, Burkitt Commons, and Burkitt Village. And part of the road improvements that's going to be recommended by the traffic study are actually improvements that we've already agreed to do on Burkitt Commons further down the road. The reason this has held up is that the fire marshal came in and demanded two access points to this community. If you look at the plan, you will see that there is actually an alley that we've added. He's looked at that, and he said, basically, he has no problem with the alley, as long as we make it to where they can turn right in and turn right out. It will be a 20-foot wide alley, equal to a nice wide 20-foot strip that you would have down there. So we do have two strips in here. I passed that document out today to show you how many homes were permitted in the Nashville market last year. According to information that we have on file, there'll be 28,000 jobs created in this market this year. If you look at it right there, we permitted in all the counties combined in Nashville, 11,000 houses. That's for townhouses and single-family houses. There is a critical shortage of workforce housing. And the mayor currently talks about affordable housing. When affordable housing and workforce housing is kind of mixed together in two words, and a lot of people get confused. Affordable housing are housing that somebody needs assistance for or assistance with in paying their payments. Workforce housing is something to meet the demand for the workforce in the marketplace. Today, affordable housing is really a minor need in this market. Workforce housing is being totally neglected. And so the city needs to move faster in approving developments that address workforce housing. This particular project is what we're doing. We're addressing workforce housing. This community will be within 20 to 30 minutes of downtown Nashville, 20 to 30 minutes to the airport. Other jobs is being created in Seven Springs, Cool Springs, Brentwood, and Antioch. To hold this job up any more longer than it is will put us out of sequence with the community trying to develop this particular community with the seasons that we have. You see the weather we're going in? We've been shut down with doing developmental lots since November. And so we actually have about a six to maybe eight months of season that we can develop lots in this community. And we have basically revised the traffic study. We did a traffic study, but that traffic study didn't comply because they wanted the second interest way. So the new traffic study is done. We are not arguing with any of the improvements the traffic department wants to put on that particular property. I will tell you that on Nolanville Road, our company has done over $1 million worth of road improvements. On Burkitt Roads, which is tied into, we're funding $2,000 to $3,000 a lot for the improvements of Burkitt Road. And so the bottom line, what we're saying is the planning commission in the city of Nashville, things got to start moving a little bit faster. We have a critical shortage of workforce housing in this market, and if the city doesn't change their thinking and say, "We got to move a little bit faster in getting things done," we're going to have that situation worse. You can go to Metro Study today and get them to do a presentation to this commission, and you will see that at the end of this year, it'll be the worst year we've had for workforce housing ever in this particular market. For that reason, we're asking you to consider it today. We will live with the conditions of making sure that we comply with the traffic study. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Tidwell. We're serving as planning consultants for Regent Homes. I just wanted to mention a few things. The plan is compliant with the policy for transect three neighborhood evolving, with the use for the, for the single-family lots. I also wanted to mention that Councilman Fabian Bedney has supported this. We had a public meeting back in October, well-attended from the public. We feel we've addressed the concerns from the neighborhood groups. We have removed density from this project. There were originally townhomes to be included. We reduced the density to only include single-family lots. We have also met staff recommendations to include meaningful open space with a pocket park in the project. We've met fires' requests to add the secondary access, and we understand the remaining issue is to provide a wide turning radius into that alley, which we don't have any opposition to providing for the emergency access to meet fires' needs. The traffic impact study has been submitted to planning. As Jason had said earlier this week, a copy has been provided to you as well, with the recommendations page tabbed. As Dave McGowan said, we're agreeing to all the recommendations that are put forth in the traffic impact study by our transportation engineer. We're seeking preliminary approval of the zoning. We don't believe that the onsite requests do not majorly impact the project. The only onsite request we are aware of remaining, again, is the turning radius for the secondary fire access in the alley to Old Burkitt Road. The offsite request will require coordination and continued dialogue with both public works and planning, and we're open to that dialogue, and we look forward to making those recommendations to the plan as we move forward to the final SP. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone in opposition? Say nothing. You've got two minutes for rebuttal.
No, we can't.
One question. What is your price point?
Part I didn't hear you.
What would be your price point on it?
Basically, we're, in this particular community overall, we're under 325,000 throughout the market that we're building in currently, right now and out there. This community right here will probably start somewhere in the 240s and go up to, right, a little bit, maybe over 300 alley loads. And you can actually go to Regent Homes website now and see Burkitt Springs, Burkitt Village. Almost everything we're doing in that community right there is under 300,000. And so it meets the demand for housing in that particular area. And a lot of the stuff, a lot of people would even consider affordable because we're under the 250 market in that particular area.
Good. Thank you. Clerk of the public hearing closed. Jennifer, I'll start with you, and then we'll come right down, all the way down to Lee.
She's going.
Okay, Derek.
She hurt her feelings.
Won't skip anybody. Go ahead.
I'm a little concerned. It sounds to me that we could defer, like you said, we could defer and not derail the timing. So it sounds, the applicant is saying, "We need to go. We need to go."
The, deferring one meeting doesn't change it at all?
Right.
I'm not sure what that was about.
So I'm, I'm reading, I'm looking at the packet here, and it sounds to me there's still some issues with the fire access that needs to be worked out with the fire marshal. The traffic impact study has been provided, but needs to be reviewed by staff. At this point, I, I am, I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say, because from my perspective, as one of the newer commissioners, if the staff hasn't had a chance to review, I'm, I'm not sure I can, can vote to approve something. We don't really know what we're looking at.
We received that two days ago.
Without, and that was supposed to be received prior to that date. The holdup is.
If they, if they want us to be able to review it in time for this meeting.
Let me make my question.
I think the evidence that they've submitted points out that we have a lot going on, and that submitting it two days and expecting it to go all the way through the process of review is pretty unrealistic.
And let me clarify my statement slash question, which is, the holdup isn't necessarily the planning staff or the planning commission. It's the fact that we didn't have a traffic impact study in timely manner to be able to review it.
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor leading.
Just, just to review again, the council public hearing
Just to review again, the council public hearing is May, that they're shooting for is, will not be changed by this. And so third reading of council will not be changed by this. Is that correct?
That's correct. The March 10th is the last meeting to stay tracking for that.
Gotcha. Sounds good. It sounds like a great project, and it sounds to me like once we have the traffic study studied and digested, and you know, perhaps if there are other things that need to be changed, they will become part of the record, which will not happen if we vote on it today. And that seems like something that's worth waiting for if we can survive the two weeks. It doesn't sound like it's going to change the start date of construction and when ground gets broken. So I mean, I think it's a great project. I appreciate all the work that Region is doing, providing workforce housing. It's certainly something that we need, and I look forward to voting for it as soon as we've got all the information we have.
Stuart.
I don't feel the ambiguity about this one that I did the last time, and I think it's a strong thing to be asked to, to, to consider this under these circumstances, and I don't think we should, and I'll be supporting deferral for one meeting.
Judge.
I agree. I think that I'd rather see what Public Works comes back with and accept that or review that for the next meeting. I just have to make one comment that I would question the definition of affordable housing just being those that require assistance, but I won't go down that discussion right now.
No comment. Derek?
No.
Motion.
Make a motion that we defer until March 10th.
Second. Motion's second to defer to March 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ready for item, item number 16. Wait a minute.
No, she's gone.
Oh, she's gone?
Uh huh.
Any left for good?
Six.
We've got six.
Six, okay.
No one is allowed to leave. You want to take a break? You ready for a break?
I guess I have to.
Take it any time. I mean, we got six here that, we got three more items, so if you'd like to take it now, we can.
And agenda now would make sense.
Okay. We'll take a quick break.
The site is approximately 8,250 square feet in size, and the existing zoning of R10 would permit one residential dwelling unit. The land use policy for the area is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance. The T3 neighborhood maintenance policy is intended to preserve the character of developed neighborhoods. While the zoning R8 allows for one and two family, the majority of the lots in this area are under the square footage required to allow two units. There are larger lots located within the media area at strategic locations that would allow for two-family dwelling units, providing for a mixture of housing types. The lots outlined in this map, the one with the star is the lot in question. The ones outlined in blue are all undersized and would not permit a two-family dwelling unit. The highlighted ones in yellow are the appropriate size to meet the existing zoning in regards to two-family residential units. Additionally, in this immediate area, the lots that are zoned R10 that are undersized are all developed as single-family residential lots. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval as rezoning a lot that is similarly situated to other existing lots in the neighborhood would be inconsistent with the land use policy for the area. Also, a horizontal property regime has been established on the lot prior to the approval of the zoning, and the horizontal property regime is set up in a way that would only permit front parking pads, which would be further inconsistent, which would call further inconsistencies with the existing character of the neighborhood.
Item is open for public hearing. Applicant be allowed 10 minutes to make a presentation. You can keep two back for rebuttal if you'd like. If you'd give them to the staff and they'll pass them out.
We only have three. We submitted some before, but hopefully those will be adequate. Hello, my name is Josh Ray. I'm the owner of the property and also of MJP Properties. And this is Courtney McKibben. He's actually my partner on this project. So we wanted to basically give you some background on how we got to this point in regards to the issue with the lot. Just to start where we're at right now, the actual structure that was existing on that property has currently been demoed, so there is no structure on there. It's just a graded lot. And kind of how we got to that juncture is, originally we purchased a lot in July 2015 for the purpose of renovation. Once we got the property, we got an inspection, as you can tell from the detailed information we gave you, there was extreme mold issues and multiple problems with the structure that would basically cause it to be extremely costly to renovate it. So our contractor, who is developing a duplex on Litten Avenue currently, recommended that we demo the property and do a duplex on it. On 1614 Litten Avenue, they have actually a 7,500-square-foot lot zoned R6, and I've attached pictures on the second page that show that it's pretty much identical to the type of project that we would be doing. Before moving forward with that recommendation, we did some due diligence and contacted codes to make sure that what our zoning was. We were informed that we're an R10 lot, and that meant that we can do up to two dwellings. At that point, there was no mentioning of any kind of square footage requirement. So after doing that due diligence, we went to get our site plan, did a master deed, we subdivided the lot into A and B. And then when we returned to get our permit, we were informed that we could not move forward because we were about 1,800 square foot short. The problem is, is the house was demoed prior to that meeting because we had already double-checked to make sure we could get a permit. So now we're kind of at the point to where we have no other options other than building multifamily, and I'll kind of get into that in a second. So at that point in time, we contacted our councilman, Anthony Davis. He recommended that we go to the BZA to try to do an appeal, and then if we couldn't do that, to apply for rezoning. We talked with the planning at the office desk and asked if this is something that we could do, and it basically came down to we were only missing one of the requirements, which is the square footage requirement. So that's the reason we moved forward with the actual application to rezone. Normally with the R status, we would have two options, which would be a single-family house or the two-family. But in our situation, we really are limited to two-family because of the extreme high cost after demoing the house for one lot. We're about $200,000 for the structure itself plus the demolition, so building one house is almost economically impossible. So we're so upside down in it that that's really our only option. And we would have never basically done this if, when we basically contacted codes, if we'd known about the restriction, we would have just put more money into renovating the project. We only demoed the project because we basically felt like we had the green light given those conversations that took place prior to. And with that point, we double-checked to see what other projects are going on in the neighborhood. If you look at the map, pretty much the adjacent streets on Tammany and Sherwood and also on Litten, they have very similar projects going on. And my understanding of our zoning is you want to have some type of mix, and on that street right now, there is no mix. It's, you know, pretty much they are just single-family dwellings. But I thought that was kind of the point of our zoning is to have some type of mix on the landscape. I want to pass it off to Courtney to kind of talk about, you know, his part in all this.
Right. Once we were able to speak with Councilman Davis, we then proceeded to go out to the actual neighborhood and just knock on doors, just to kind of get a feel for what some of the neighbors in the area had to say about it. So we tried to reach as many neighbors as possible in a short timeframe. And in pun doing so, we were able to speak with numerous people who were actually in favor of modifying the lot and building a duplex on that existing property. And we also met with some people that were in opposition of it as well. But to my point, you know, we reached out to a tremendous amount of people, and we had a decent amount of support. And to piggyback off of that, one of the things that I did when I spoke with a lot of members of the community, I specifically asked about what was the condition of the house. Had people been in and out? And a lot of the feedback was basically, you know, "This house really hasn't been occupied consistently over the course of five years." And that was pretty obvious by the time we were able to go in, take a look at the foundation, the actual home itself, and realize that the roof itself had caved in. To Josh's point, there are numerous pictures that show structural integrity issues, tremendous mold issues in the basement, and again, the whole roof itself had fallen in on one side of the home itself. So just wanted to point that out to you guys.
So we're asking for your approval when it comes to this rezoning. We are just 1,800 square foot short. If we happen to own the lot to the right, we could move forward with our project. As I showed you on Litten Avenue, a 7,500-square-foot lot zoned R6 has the exact same thing that we're trying to do right now. And this is really our only option other than leaving pretty much a vacant property graded as is. We would like to definitely try to do something to improve, you know, that neighborhood and that area. So that's all we have for you, and thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, I just want to add one additional thing. It was mentioned that the property itself would require a parking lot on the front. The home actually has an attached single-car garage with it, so I just wanted to point that out.
Do you guys have any questions for us before?
Any question? Thank you. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay.
Any one in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you. I'm at 1707 Litten Avenue, and I just want to say, I have not met with either one of these gentlemen, and I really feel like that this does not fit in with that particular property, what they are proposing to do. I'm very sorry about what happened to them with their whole saga that sounds like a nightmare, but I can't see that this would substantially address the things that they are bringing up as far as mixed development plans or anything for the neighborhood. The lot is just simply too small. I don't think that it addresses the parking issue for that particular street, so I would ask that the staff recommendation is upheld to disapprove this plan. Thank you.
Jim? Sure. Oh, give us your name and --
Sarah Potite.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Hi. I'm Eddie Huffman, also at 1707 Litten Avenue, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission today. I want to echo what Sarah said and also add why I too, you know, with all due respect, you know, appreciate the situation of the developers. Don't feel like the neighborhood should have to pay for, you know, mistakes and lack of foresight in choosing a wise investment. But more importantly, you know, such a development as they propose is out of character for the neighborhood. And I would also like to point out that their reference to a similar property on Litten Avenue is not actually in the current neighborhood, but is on the other side of Litten Avenue. And so I would also like to support the staff's recommendation to disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is David McMullin. I reside at 1712 Litten, directly across the street from this current lot. I'd like to second most of what my neighbors have said to this point, that the similar property is across Riverside Drive, not on our small 750-foot long stretch of it. It's quite large. The proposed plan, Mr. McKibben stopped by just this past Tuesday to my house. That was the first I had seen any actual plan for the property. And he showed me just a basic drawing, and it was quite large. And after seeing this, it is very large for the plot and not fitting with the neighborhood. So I would recommend disapproving. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Jurgen. I live at 1700 Litten Avenue. Probably the longest lived resident in that block. Been there almost 40 years. I disapprove of this because it does not fit in with the neighborhood. We have single families there. It's very narrow lots. Our street is, does not, cannot accommodate a whole lot. And I agree with the recommendations of the staff that this be disapproved. Thank you.
My name's Zachariah Orbin. I live at 1705 Litten with Tim. We've been residents on the street for about eight years.
You're going to fall asleep.
And we would, I very much echo the sentiments of my neighbors that were before me, and I'm going to keep this brief. We would please, appreciate it if you would continue to disapprove of the, of this motion.
I'd like to hear what he has to say there.
What'd he say, bud?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like. Okay. I'd like to declare the public hearing closed. Jessica.
Do we have a map of the zoning for just the whole area?
Yes. Yes. So the property -- Apologies. This is all R10, and then you see this kind of line here. This is RS10, which is single-family. This is RS10. And then over here on Litten, you have R6. So this is the, this, there's here, this alley is the dividing line. So all of this along Riverside and Litten is R10.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that certainly raises a red flag right there, in my opinion.
I did check, and it's been zoned R10 since at least 1974. And so it's not uncommon to have lots that are unders, or that don't meet the standards of the zoning ordinance in regards to the lot size depending on when they were created. And so it has been zoned this, in this manner since at least 1974, as far back as I could check.
Okay. I mean, certainly I'm sympathetic to the challenges that they've been through, and it does sound like they've been given some misleading advice along the way. But I also think that, you know, given the context of this neighborhood and that this kind of development would potentially be somewhat out of place, and just the potential for the spot zoning seems to be a concern to me. So I am going to listen to what everyone else has to say.
Good question. Before I move on, lot 202 and 204, you would be able to build two units on it?
They do. Right. They do, yes, they do meet the lot standard in regards to the size. They are large enough. They exceed 10,000 square feet, which is the minimum standard for the first criteria to be eligible. They would have to confirm if it was legally created, kind of what we talked about on that last one, if it was legally created prior to 1984. But they are the only two on that immediate stretch of the street that meet that base criteria of the size.
Okay. Thank you. Stuart? Stuart? Hunter, would you punch him, wake him up? He dreaming. Go ahead, Hunter.
I just have a question for staff, and you may have addressed this, Lisa, and I apologize if I didn't hear it, but is there currently a horizontal property regime on the property?
Yes.
And so that, that doesn't allow to, I'm curious.
Well, the filing and recording of a horizontal property regime is done through the Register of Deeds Office and does not have anything to do with the zoning and does not establish any sort of rights to, to build what you record with a horizontal property regime.
Interesting.
Something that we'd like to clear up with the state.
I'd say, well, I certainly empathize with the situation that the developers are in, but I'm not sure we have much choice here but to follow staff. I'd say, well, I certainly empathize with the situation that the developers are in, but I'm not sure we have much choice here but to follow staff's recommendation.
Bertha?
I think I know the answer, but I'll ask anyway. Is a detached accessory dwelling unit a possibility on this lot?
It's not. For the base zoning of R10, you still have to meet the minimum standard of the zoning ordinance of 10,000 square feet, and also have an alley access. If you do not have an alley access, but you're 15,000 square feet or above, then you could have a detached accessory dwelling unit, but this lot would not be eligible.
Okay, so that option's not. I mean, I would echo what's been said, and I think the circumstances are unfortunate. I would hope we would communicate with codes in the future to make sure they don't continue to give advice that is inconsistent with what's ultimately going to happen from the planning, planning staff. But it does seem, the neighbors have spoken, and I think if no one cared, that might make it a little bit easier to disregard this. But that, I think under the circumstances, we'd follow your advice.
Jennifer?
I have no comment.
Okay, is there a motion?
We disapprove.
Okay, motion seconded, disapproved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17.
I feel for them being 200,000 in the hole. I feel for them being 200,000 in the hole.
Yeah. Because somebody's going to go right next door and he'll tell you what they want to do.
Counsel, finish them his memory.
I mean, they could borrow, buy their house next door and reestablish plot lines, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 17 is a request for an amendment to the Carrollton Station Planned Unit Development. This is a request to permit 30 multifamily units, where 60 multifamily units are currently approved. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site is located on Una Antioch, or off of Payne Road near Una Antioch Pike, and is currently zoned RM6 and MUL with a planned unit development overlay. Excuse me. The, this planned unit development was approved originally in 2004, and the council approved plan, which is shown on the screen, included an approval for 139 multifamily units, 16 single-family lots, and 14,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The MUL portion of the approved plan is shown here, highlighted in red. The overall PUD boundary is shown, outlined in red. In 2005, an approved revised preliminary and final was approved, which included 126 multifamily lots and eight single-family lots. In July of 2015, the Planning Commission approved a revised preliminary, which included 60 multifamily units. It did not include the portion of the PUD that has the single-family lots as they were previously plotted, and it did not include the MUL portion of the site. This shaded portion here is MUL, however, it's not a buildable area of the MUL-approved property. The requested rezoning is to decrease the number of units to 30 of the approved, when it's currently approved for 60. The policy for the area is T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance, with areas of, small areas of conservation also located on the lot. T3 Neighborhood Maintenance is intended to preserve the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. They will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are expanded or replaced, or when vacant property is developed. The overall, I'm sorry, the proposed amendment, as I said, calls for a reduction of the approved multifamily units from the currently approved 60 down to 30. No plan has been provided at this time to indicate the location of those units. Staff recommends approval of this as, with the Neighborhood Maintenance policy area, there are a varying number of residential units that could be appropriate on the property. Given the property's location, somewhat excluded from other developed residential neighborhoods, and adjacent to a residential corridor policy here, there are varying development scenarios that could be appropriate. We have included certain conditions that state that a final site plan must indicate the layout of the proposed units, streets and access drive, parking, open space landscaping, stormwater, and other necessary information for a final site plan. So, if it's approved, that is the proposed recommendation that we have. So, given the size of the subject property and its location in relation to nearby developments, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Item 17 for public hearing. Applicant, be allowed 10 minutes for your presentation, and hold to back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, we're opposed, so we got a little bit of someone who's speaking in support. I heard the council lady spoke earlier.
Is the applicant here for the--
Yeah, the council lady is the applicant.
Okay. Would you like to speak again?
I do not.
Okay. Anyone in the audience in support?
I'm Margot Chambers, and I'm here in support of Council virtue and to support manageable density and infrastructure growth. And I don't know if the final site plan has, is under administrative review or not, but I'd ask that it comes before the council so that there's a public hearing, so that the public has the ability to have input on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's George Dean. I'm a member of the firm, Tunachran and White. Mr. White's not available today. He's, I think, out on vacation somewhere or another, so he sent me as kind of backup. I'm here in opposition to the request. The Planning Commission may remember that as late as January of this year, you heard this plan, the site plan, I think you were here quite late that night. If I recall, Tom told me that it went to about midnight--
It went to the end stage.
--when the site plan was approved. So, I understand the staff is saying basically that this area in the general plan is flexible, but since the Planning Commission ruled on this matter, or very similar matter in the same property, just a matter of a month ago, it seems very strange that the Planning Commission would recommend approval of this proposed change in the zoning. I'd also point out that, and I put on each of the desks in front of you, an opinion from the legal department, dealing with both the Metro Code provisions, dealing with vested rights, and also the new Tennessee Vested Rights Act that deals with these kinds of projects, and specifically protects this kind of approval that's already been given. The legal department's conclusion, and my conclusion, and Tom's conclusion as well, is that this property is protected by the Vested Rights Act, and if the two proposals were to pass, they don't have any impact anywhere. Furthermore, if you don't have a plan in front of you, we won't submit a plan to reduce the density further. The Planning Commission may remember that originally, and you saw on the screen, that the original approval was as high as approximately 140 units, 139, I think, back in 2004. What has, what the final approval has been now is 60, so we've already cut it in half. So, we'd ask that the Planning Commission recommend this approval. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, anyone who have two minutes for rebuttal?
Thank you again. Let me get my notes real fast. The reduction in density for this project, when it was approved, it not taken into consideration was actually going on in the area, as we already know, the age of this PUD. So, I just want to give some brief information that's actually coming around for this area. There's 800 units coming to Cambridge Row, 250 units are already stacked. Ridge View, 252 apartments. Millwood Commons, Bell Row, Blue Hill Row, 528 units. 260 construction units are currently underway now. That's a total of about over almost 1,000 units that's coming to this area. So, when we stood before you, January 14th, requesting to have the PUD reviewed, it had nothing to do with the developer, the organization. It had everything to do with the growth of the community, and how the PUD did not reflect the growth for the actual community. Vested rights does not negate public interest and public health. That area is one of the most highly congested areas out in southeast on that corridor. I understand the argument for vested rights, but we have, we're charged with making sure that the public is safe out there on that section. I want to give you some more data as well, too, because none of this is being taken into consideration. And I've extended and been more than reasonable with this organization for us to have a dialogue with the community, so we can get this project right, so that not only that their constituents that they serve is safe, and also that the neighborhood surrounding is safe, too. Many of you are aware, we had an active shooting incident last year. Many of our neighbors were landlocked. They could not get out. Want to give you-- Can I get some more time?
Give me a couple more minutes.
Okay. Want to give you some more data. January 3rd, murder victim. December 8th, man dead. January 7th, man hunt underway in Antioch, violent home invasion. January 16th, fatally wounded. January 26th, man found murdered, Pebble Creek, Edjo Lake. January 29th, investigated murder. February 11th, 21-year-old shot. February 13th, man fatally wounded. This issue regarding this, this development is more than just what this, more than just this organization. This is about us making sure we get this development right, that we put public safety first, that we actually come together. And I can't stress enough, I've been more than willing with this organization for us to sit down so that we can get this right. This is not, as I stated back in January 14th, this is not about not having something in our backyard. We want it done right, but the public safety has to come first as well.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing closed. Stuart?
I think the idea of planning developments and reviewing them, for so long, we went without thinking they could be changed, and then the council put in certain parameters. And then, as we began to further look at it, it seemed more to me, as a commissioner, that what we're supposed to do is look at what kind of proposal is put before us and evaluate it on planning grounds, which the staff has done. There's obviously a vital, interesting, and complex discussion to go on about the legal aspects of this, I suppose. But we're not sitting here as a body of legal experts, certainly not the lawyers on the commission at all. But to look at what has been brought to us, whether it becomes law or not, whether vested rights has some implications for this or not. So, I take it that our role here as commissioners is to evaluate this proposal on its own, period. And what the staff has proposed, how they have analyzed it, seems to me to be reasonable. So, I'll listen to what other people think, but that's my initial thought.
Hunter?
I guess first of all, I just had a question, I assume, but I'm not sure it was stated, that the person spoke, do you represent the property owner?
Yes, Senator. The Jericho LLC is a holding subsidiary.
Okay, thank you. You know, I guess one question I have for staff is whether you considered this proposal relative to the current zoning, and whether this would be considered more appropriate, or better fit the neighborhood or the community plan than the current zoning, or current plan?
No, I think that just from a standpoint of the neighborhood maintenance, there could be any number of units, any number of plans with varying number of units that could be appropriate on this property, given its location adjacent to residential corridor and relatively separated from other developments. And so, we're not weighing one against the other. We're just saying that there are varying levels of number of units that could be appropriate with the policy.
And do you recall if staff's recommendation on the plan in July was for approval?
Yes.
It was?
Yes.
And the commission approved. And that was, was that a final site plan, or was that a rezoning?
It was a revision to the preliminary PUD. Yes.
Revision, okay. Okay. Well, you know, I haven't heard any compelling evidence that anything has really changed from last July, when we approved that plan. And so, I have a, you know, and the staff really hasn't reviewed this with respect to the current PUD. They're just sort of giving it on its face value by itself, whether this is appropriate or not. And, you know, our community plans call for density, you know, near these nodes of mix of uses, such as this MUL area at Antioch Pike there. And so, it seems like the current plan is perhaps even more appropriate to me than the, than the proposed plan, so a revision to the PUD. So, given that the property owner is opposed to it, and we, as a commission, and the staff agreed, that the plan presented to us six months ago was appropriate, I'm going to have a hard time supporting this proposed amendment.
Bertha?
No comment. I'm just listening.
Okay. Jessica?
I agree with everything our fellow commissioners have said. I think my question to the applicant, there was a lot of mention of these 1,000 units coming to the area. A thousand units coming to the area, and I'm not sure, and then all of the criminal issues that have happened. I guess I'm unclear as to how reducing this PUD, just based on your opinion, from 60 units to 30, which, as we pointed out, we just approved six months ago, would make a difference. I mean, in your opinion, this is obviously not anything scientific.
That's a great question. And I know many of you, you can't get a clear visualization of that area if you haven't actually been out there. I just, can I pose real fast, how many of the commissioners have actually been there? Okay. So, the units that I was talking about is actually more than 1,000. All of them are surrounding, you can't see it here, but the streets for Una Antioch Pike, you can't see Mountview, you can't see Hickory Hollow Parkway, you can't see all those adjoining streets that run into Una Antioch Pike on this map. Also, you can't see the subdivisions that's further down on Una Antioch Pike that use this corridor to access the interstate. So, at any given moment, that's probably not accurate, when the train comes, these neighbors are actually, they're stuck. There's no way, there's nowhere for them to go. So, they get congestion, not only, I don't even see Blue Hole Road up here either. So, you're not getting a clear picture of why-- So you're not getting a clear picture of why decreasing the density on there is important, how it correlates with the other area for the community. I gave the crime statistics just to paint a picture of what we're dealing with out here in this area as it relates to the density. Not saying one is more, they're correlated with the other, but I was just providing that for informational purposes. The most important thing is, again, is getting it right. This is a public safety issue. We don't want to continue to landlock the neighbors. And I can't stress enough, our community, we want to work with this organization, but they have to want to work with us as well. We live out there, we're vested in the community. They don't live out there. And I'm not saying that, you know, that gives them the right or the entitlement to come into our neighborhoods and just do what they want to do. We're trying to, well, I'm trying to bridge the community's interests along with their interests also. I think this is a good middle ground. It does not stop them from doing what they need to do. It does not stop the project. No one is actually saying that. We're just asking for them to be reasonable to us already there. They're coming in. The 1,500-plus units is already coming.
Again, back to Howard.
Yeah, this is a public, for the record, for the record. I understand vested rights, but we have a charge to make sure that the community is safe. We can't continue to, this area is already a dense area, for the record. It's already a dense area. Reducing it from 60 to 30, really 30 is a lot for this area, but I'm not a planner. We need to be concerned about increasing the density right here for this sector. This is one of the most congested areas out here, out in southeast. You have the railroad right there, you have Unit Antioch Pike, you have Moss Road, you have Blue Hole Road, you have Mountview Road, you have Hickory Hollow Parkway. I mean, this is one of the most congested areas where this proposed development will be common.
Okay, thank you. I just, I agree with Hunter, though, that we approved 60 units six months ago, so I'm not sure what's changed in that part of town.
Jessica.
I think I would go with what has already been said. I don't see any compelling reason. I think it's pretty clear with staff's analysis that it could be 30, it could be 60, it could even be the original 100 units that was once proposed. I mean, it's already come down quite significantly since this PUD was first put in place. I'm certainly sympathetic to the need to manage our infrastructure correctly, and that may be a discussion that we have on the next item. That's a countywide issue, it's not just specific to southeast, although so much of the growth is happening down there. But I don't see any of those as being the compelling reasons to approve this change.
Need a motion?
I'd like to ask a question of staff. You know, I voted for the last, for the 60. I'm inclined to believe the staff on this, that 30 is also appropriate. It's an unusual thing. I've been on the commission a long time, and it doesn't usually come up very much. It struck me when I read the analysis that it is possible for a planning commission, with our charge to evaluate what's before us, can say yes to both. It doesn't mean we're choosing between the two. So am I missing something? I mean, I assume that's what the commission staff thought.
Well, that's correct.
It's a conceptual matter.
Right. There's not a plan that works for every piece of property. Oftentimes, there are multiple, very, iterations of the plan that would be suitable, given the policy and the zoning in the area. And so as we tried, and I think we avoided doing here, we weren't trying to compare the two plans to say, well, which is better? We felt like it was our job to say, well, is what's proposed in front of us appropriate or not? And give our recommendation just based on that. And we felt like that this plan was appropriate, but we gave a recommendation, as was pointed out, that 60 was appropriate. And I suspect, I don't have it in front of me, but we probably recommended approval of 139 at the time. Oh, we did, but with a recommendation that there be some infrastructure improvements, and that council would amend that PUD at the time to include that infrastructure requirement. And so, again, there are multiple iterations that we might agree to.
Hunter.
Stuart, I appreciate your conceptual thinking about what we're charged with here, but today, they can build 30 units. So the current plan establishes that that's allowed and is appropriate. They can build 30 also.
Can they?
Sure.
So the planned unit development without amendment?
It's a maximum.
Can be 30?
Right. So the way I see it is, we are being asked to approve a downzoning and a change from what we said was appropriate six months ago to less, you know, less density. And it's a change that we're being asked to approve, because they can build 30 today. So there's nothing else about this bill, I think, that, except that it's a change from what they can currently. And so that's what we're really being asked to approve, in my mind. I appreciate what you're saying, that we, you know, we can and should evaluate, you know, what's in front of us. But to me, what's in front of us is, you know, contrary to the property owner's desires, a change and a reduction in what we, you know, from what we approved six months ago.
Someone like to make a motion?
I don't really want to make a motion, but we did, we did not too many months ago vote to recommend the lifting of an entire PUD, based on a lot of different things in a different part of town. I really think it's a novel question we have, and you may be very right, that the real issue is simply, why change what we did then? I guess I was thinking more, not as a policy decider, which we're not, the deciders were the recommenders on planning issues. So we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Hunter.
I was just going to make a motion that we, I guess, disapprove staff recommendation and leave it at the 60 units.
I'll second that, and with a comment. I really do appreciate, and I think most of the commissioners here probably do appreciate our council ladies' objective in terms of protecting quality of life and concerns about crime and safety and all of those things, for sure. But I think where we, as a commission, have never specifically tied density with safety and security issues. In other words, you know, many of our plans and community plans talk about increasing density in key areas, and some of the most dense places in Nashville are some of the most safest neighborhoods. So I don't necessarily associate that with density with crime. So with that, I, well, I've already seconded the motion, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, second to disapprove, the request for staff to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me see, a show of hands. Okay, motion carries. Does that negate, take it on item 18?
No.
Okay, item 18.
Item 18 is a requested amendment to the, I'm sorry?
Okay.
Item 18 is a requested amendment to the Carrollton Station PUD. The request is to require specific traffic improvements, as noted on a recommendation by Public Works dated December 9th, 2004, prior to the issuance of any use and occupancy permits for the project. Staff recommendation is to approve the recommended amendment, or the proposed amendment. The existing zoning of the property, again, is RM 6 and MUL with a planned unit development overlay. The portion of MUL is here on the bottom. The policy for the area is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance with spots of conservation. As a reminder, this is the council-approved plan. 139 multifamily units approved by council, up to 16 single-family lots, 14,000 square feet of non-residential. The MUL portion is highlighted in red on the southern part of the site. In 2005, there was a revised preliminary and final PUD approved, 126 multifamily, eight single-family lots. The MUL went unchanged and remained at 14,000 square feet of non-residential. This is the approved revised preliminary, as approved in July of 2015, which permitted up to 60 multifamily residential units. The next few slides have the Public Works conditions from the 12904 recommendation. This first slide is for the recommended improvements at Blue Hole and Unit Antioch Pike. The remaining conditions were for the intersection of Hickory Hollow Parkway and Unit Antioch Pike. And those are listed in your staff report as well. At the time of the planning commission approval, at December 9th, '04, there was a condition of approval by the planning commission that stated, "Prior to third reading at council, all traffic improvements required by Metro Public Works in the approved traffic impact study must be amended into the council bill. If these conditions are not amended into the council bill, the recommendation is for disapproval." The bill was not amended to include the traffic improvements. Council did pass the bill on third reading by a vote of 35,40 against. In regards to the Public Works review, Public Works, as the project has progressed and with each approval, Public Works has evaluated the needed traffic improvements for each approval based on what's being approved in each specific approval. In regards to the amendment at hand, Public Works took no exception to the recommended, to the proposed amendment to require the traffic improvements prior to use and occupancy permit for the project. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Item is open for public hearing. If applicant allowed 10 minutes to make a presentation, if you'd like.
Good evening, I'm Margot Chambers of Nashville. And you do have a duty to Nashville to manage growth, and tonight is most nights, most of Nashville watches, as you put blinders on and allow density irregardless of the quality of life. So if you're unable to listen to your own staff, or you cannot self-manage growth, I respectfully request you add investment into the area to help this community overcome the disadvantages you keep placing in the area. And those are disadvantages of too much density and not enough income. One of the reasons why it's low income has to do with the roads. So please do a traffic impact analysis, not just a study, and make sure, as MPO, fiscal agent, that you fund that infrastructure improvement. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak and support? Seeing none, and wishing to speak in opposition. Clear the public hearing, closed. Jessica.
So do we know if any of those improvements that were required in 2004 have already been No, no, okay. So...
Wait a minute, were they required by the council?
That were going to be required.
There are two questions pending.
Mine was whether any of the recommendations...
Come here, the microphone, Stuart.
The recommendations that were associated with the original plan in 2004 have been completed.
Devon Doyle, Metro Public Works, not that I'm aware of. No, they have not.
Okay. And with each subsequent review, and as we've decreased the units, has there been any sense of, we may, this might change the requirements?
Basically, the originally approved conditions have carried forward with no objection from the applicant, as the project has been modified.
Okay. I mean, I think this is a really good opportunity to address one of the key concerns in the area, which is infrastructure, and making sure we get adequate infrastructure investment into that area. And so this item, to me, is a lot more clear-cut, is a way to kind of immortalize the need for those infrastructure improvements in this area. So I would be leaning towards supporting staff's recommendation on this.
Yeah, any other comment?
Yes, it was pointed out, and I think Mr. Dean is correct, that when this, when the revision came through in July, I guess there was a modification to the trigger of the conditions, that the multifamily was conditioned to construct a left-turn lane. All remaining improvements were to be completed with the development of the commercial portion of the PUD. And honestly, I'm not sure how the triggers were established or set with the 2004 approval, but I know we did clarify that in July.
So if this project had come back in again in 2015, there would have been different, potentially some different requirements?
There were different requirements.
I mean, there were different requirements.
The sum total of the conditions, and the conditions themselves didn't change, it was the...
The trigger.
The triggers, basically.
So doing this multifamily went on a trigger to as many of the improvements? Okay. Okay. I'm going to listen.
Stuart?
Yeah, well, it sounds like there's no one really opposed to this, to these, I gather.
That's not true. I didn't stand up, because I thought you'd heard everything I had to say. Really, I thought I was addressing 70 to 18 together.
Okay. So you're calling as opposed to these conditions?
We're opposed to the bill. The conditions were placed upon us by the planning commission back in July. We believe, we believe them are still there.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm having trouble catching up. So this bill, what, I guess I need staff's help again on this, I was, I guess, not really plugged in enough. Give us the two options we have.
Yes. So at the time that the project was approved in 2004, there were a series of conditions for the entire PUD that included improvements to Blue Hole Road intersection and to the Hickory Hollow Parkway intersection with Unit Antioch Pike. Those conditions are the ones that are listed out in your staff report there. When the plan came through in July 2015 for the 60 units, there were certain improvements that were required with that multifamily portion, and the remainder of those units, the remainder of those improvements that were conditioned in 2004 were tied to the development of the MUL site. The proposal is to require all of the improvements as originally conditioned with the approval of the PUD in 2004, prior to any use and occupancy permits for any of the project.
Well, I did just have a comment, and I want to listen to what other people think about it, but it may surprise some members of the commission that there, for a while, we would make these recommendations and be completely disregarded by the council. It was only later that we began more artfully voting to say we disapprove unless these are included. But it does, I have to say, help me and... But it does, I have to say, help me understand why this, no, communities in this city got pretty disillusioned with a few things. Because we let, now, in this case, it didn't actually happen, it could have happened, that we let development happen without even those conditions that we all knew had to be concurrent. Now, how that plays out with this today, I don't know. I just wanted to mention that.
Hunter?
I have a question for Mr. Doyle. Is he hiding? Thanks for sticking around today, Devin. Can Public Works require off-site improvements outside of any specifically required by an ordinance? In other words, when someone comes in with a development, and there's obviously traffic issues all over our county, does Public Works, you all have the authority, and do you require for final site plan approvals, any off-site requirements that aren't necessarily tied to a zoning ordinance?
If there can, generally speaking, we require construction of improvements that are conditioned upon developments by the Planning Commission. I'm not aware of us going beyond that unless it, through the course of the development of construction plans, things evolve and more work is required, but I don't know if I have that answer to your question.
Yeah, and I'm not... Generally speaking, we hold the development community to the conditions that are placed on them by the Planning Commission.
Okay. And maybe our legal counsel has addition?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question for me? I want to make your answer, Dan, before I answer.
Well, and I'm not sure if I even know the relevance of my question here, except I was, my mind was heading down a certain path. And the question is, does Public Works have the authority to, say, someone comes in, submits a site plan for building permit, they already have their zoning in place, there's no conditions tied to their zoning relative to traffic improvements, and yet, it's going to create lots of traffic, and so, there's some improvements that need to be done off-site? Does Public Works have the authority to require a developer to make improvements off-site?
I think that they probably do have that authority, yes.
I would say that what, that that would be a health, safety, welfare issue that Public Works could take up if there was a development that they felt there was insufficient infrastructure to support that development, and that they felt it created a safety concern for the community, that they could refuse to sign off on the permit, and therefore, you never get the ability to construct the project in that way, require an improvement to the infrastructure prior to signing off on the plans. And I'm sure if something like that happened, Mr. Dean would be willing to go to court and clarify just exactly what Public Works' authority is on such thing.
Okay, thanks.
But I do believe that they would have the authority, and probably the authority that's under the charter, and they're obligated to make sure that the roads are designed in a safe manner.
Separate question. I don't recall, and that's, I just, I don't recall any conversation at the commission meeting last July about these triggers, and they, sometimes, I know we have lots of conditions that we don't necessarily discuss specifically. I was just curious how those triggers changed from the two thousand and four bill, or clarified, I guess. I mean, you've said there's certain ones that had to be done. I think you've explained what it changed to, but what did it change from?
The two thousand and fifteen, July two thousand and fifteen plan was on the consent agenda. So, there wasn't discussion.
Okay.
The second bullet, though, on page ninety-eight, makes it pretty clear what we...
Okay, sorry. So, yeah, that didn't quite answer my question. So, what were the triggers in the original bill? I guess is the question. Or were there triggers?
That's what, yeah, I'm not sure, in all honesty, Hunter. I guess we'd have to go back and...
Do we have the notes from the original PUD approval that cited, because the amendment was something that we suggested, do we have what those triggers were?
The language is in the, that I've included in my staff report for the conditions, is the exact language that was from the approval. Because it was for the entire project, it listed all of the traffic study, or the traffic improvements that were required for the one hundred and thirty-nine units, the sixteen single-family, and the fourteen thousand square feet, but there were no specific triggers listed in that original approval. Now, those conditions that were listed out in the staff report from Public Works didn't include anything in that original approval.
And Devin, I assume, since we were on consent the last time Public Works supported that clarification, that identified those triggers. Do you recall?
Correct. I think that was our recommendation. And if, I suspect it was based on the fact that the PUD had changed from one hundred and thirty residential units, multifamily units, to sixty, less than half, and so consequently some, I guess, some clarifications were made at that point.
Right. And how do you all approach when, I'm sure this isn't the only situation that's not clear in terms of triggers, when there's all these improvements to be made? Because this bill is specifically stating that if the developer develops, say, five townhomes, and that's all they develop, that we, as a city, can't issue an occupancy permit until they do all of these improvements. So, is that unusual, and, or is that how we would typically approach traffic improvements with a large development?
You know, in all honesty, it varies. I mean, frequently, improvements are built on the front end, and I might defer to some input from planning. I don't know to what level traffic improvement triggers are required, per se, as part of your, as part of your approvals. Doug, you may be able to better speak.
Well, anytime that you're going to require some type of, especially off-site infrastructure improvement, it's incumbent upon us to create the nexus between the development and that requirement. We can't just say you have to, and I cite in a fairly famous case, that you have to give us some beachfront access, and, you know, and part of that, your beachfront area has to be open to the public to, and we'll rezone your property to the way that you want it if you'll do that. There has to be, but the requirement that the government's making on you to do some sort of improvement, it has to be related, and we'd have to show that there is an impact because of your development to our infrastructure that is deficient, and therefore, that nexus is there, and therefore, you'd have to do that infrastructure improvement. I don't know if that answers it.
It does, thanks. And I guess my last question, Devin, is, are, I mean, this was two thousand and four when these conditions were put in place. Are all these still relevant? And would there be, and was, does the reduction in density from the original plan suggest that any of those improvements would no longer be necessary?
Generally speaking, you know, logic would, logic would tell you that if you reduce the density significantly, that the impact on the infrastructure would, I guess, in concert with that, would be less, and so, the conditions could be reduced. In this particular case, the conditions of the previous approved plan were carried forward, and the applicant agreed to those conditions with the approved modifications. So, yeah, I mean, basically, they were carried forward, and there was no objection.
Just the trigger was clarified. Thank you. That's all.
Hunter, let me point out on page ninety-eight, you know, there's some footnotes there that we've modified it down to sixty, which we've sustained that amount today. And also, the triggers are pointed out on there that there's what's to be done for the sixty, and then what's to be done for the MUL. So, that was in concert with the sixty that we've now sustained and said that. So, I would, in my opinion, was, this would carry through, since we agreed that we still maintain at the sixty, that we would maintain these choke points as we did in July.
Well, I think I tend to agree that, you know, if our Public Works Department felt that was appropriate in July...
Well, it said that the Public Works was evaluated, and they took no exception to it, so...
Yeah.
Berkeley?
More traffic questions. Don't go away, Devin. Just to kind of follow up on the number of units that have come online or are planned to come online in the nearby vicinity, does Public Works take sort of the cumulative effect of those types of things into, I mean, there are mentions of a thousand other units somewhere nearby that may make that road even harder to turn left off of and onto. Does that, is there a process for putting those together somewhere, or do we not?
We do when the developments are, I guess, in close enough proximity, and their distribution can be accounted for, and the impacted network where the proposed project that is under scrutiny is to be built, if that makes any sense. I mean, you know, the truth is, a five-hundred-unit development in Hendersonville will generate traffic in Green Hills, and so, how you track that, that really, that level of accountability from a developer's standpoint doesn't get factored in. Now, obviously, if they're in close proximity from a regional perspective, they can be worked into the system. You know, relative to the size of the project, you can only carry your analysis so far before the impact becomes insignificant. Now, the projects that were specifically mentioned, I've got to admit, I don't know exactly where those projects are. There are a lot, a number of large-scale projects within the area, and so, I would be remiss to say that some of that traffic, I would assume, will be probably proceeding through this area, Hickory Hollow Parkway, Antioch Pike, Una Antioch, and such. To what level and what order of magnitude, I can't say. If it was an approved project that was unbuilt in the near vicinity of a project like this, those traffic projections are accounted for in the development of the impact studies for any future developments that are unapproved, if that makes sense.
To some degree. And then, typically, when you're, when you're making these decisions, is there, I mean, I think anything over a hundred triggers an official traffic impact study, does that include actual traffic counts for the streets in question? And would that have been done, and would that have been updated to see if the recommendations were still appropriate?
That was done in two thousand and four. Basically, they, they, someone got the project approved in two thousand and four based on a traffic impact study, and the revision that came through in two thousand and fifteen, I guess, July, was actually a downzoning. It reduced the number of trips that were being generated. Now, at that point, I guess, we could have worked with the developer and reevaluating and reassessing the conditions and reduce the conditions. That's typically what would happen. When someone downsizes their project, for whatever reason they're doing, it frequently, they would ask to reanalyze so that they can reduce the number of improvements. However, in this particular case, they didn't, so the conditions, the previously approved conditions were carried on.
Gotcha. And if traffic had increased significantly on Una Antioch, just because it's been ten years and there's a lot more stuff out there, would that...
That could be accounted for, to my knowledge, and I've looked at, the Tennessee Department of Transportation has annual count stations in this location, and based on my recollection of those reviews, there has not been a significant change in the volumes.
It's kind of hit saturation.
No, I think they're in the neighborhood of seven to nine thousand vehicles a day.
Okay, no more questions.
Jennifer?
I actually don't have any questions, just want to clarify, based on what our commissioner has, the chairman has said. I think we approved this in July of last year, and we approved the triggers. At this point, with a downzone like we've done, the triggers stand, as far as I, I mean, my opinion is that this doesn't change anything, and that it would be an undue burden to put, to amend this to now require the developer of the PUD to do all of the traffic studies and do all of the improvements that now are linked to the MUL. So, with that said, I personally don't think I can approve the passage of this.
Are you making a motion?
I will make a motion that we disapprove.
For a second?
I'll second, but I actually had a comment, too, and I think, you know, I think this question about how we address infrastructure needs is critical, and I think that, you know, we do need to be looking at a holistic picture of how much development is going to happen in a community and figure out how we budget and how we, who we're asking to pay for what. I mean, it's the same argument that we've had with the housing side. We can't put it all in development, we can't ask the city to do it all, there's got to be ways that we bring this together, but it takes a concerted planning. I know that's something we've got going with the CIB. So, hopefully, this is something that will change over time. I think that the issues that have been brought up around this project are really important to think about, especially for this part of Aunt Nashville. But, again, I don't see why we can, I agree with Jennifer, that we can't put that burden on one project when, as we clearly noted, there's a thousand other units coming on board that haven't had the same requirements placed on them. So, God, I second Jennifer's motion.
Got a motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Berkeley, got any words of wisdom from the council that we need to hear about?
Nothing new. The Ad-Hoc Affordable Housing Committee is continuing to meet. I'm hopeful that, maybe we can also have some other readings that I've asked Mr. Sloan to set up, just with lots of stakeholders, so that we will, at some point, have some, maybe slight revisions to the affordable housing bill before it is reintroduced at the beginning of April.
Beginning of April?
That was the plan, so that it could track with the budget. If we feel like we're ready, we will do that. If we feel like we're not, we will just make sure that what's going on with the budget is in line with what we think we will need.
And what is the timing for another meeting?
Excellent question.
Are we, can we, can we aim to do that in the near future?
We're doing more than aiming, we're actually planning.
Okay.
And, but, my right arm on such issues is not sitting here right now. If we talk long enough, I feel confident she'll text me the answer to your question.
No, 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 I'll call her. I'll call her another day.
No, we can stay.
No, we need to.
So, but, yeah, we are putting together the meetings, yeah. And what we're, we didn't want to put together the meeting until we got some information that we're waiting on David to get back, and so...
Any recommendations? This full list of recommendations?
Yes. I have a draft at the state.
Hunter, you have anything from Mr. Art? Any other words?
I have good news. We have two new planners in the office. I'm constantly telling you all about defectors, but we've had Debbie Sullivan and Patrick Napier here, they're here with us tonight. Y'all want to stand up and introduce them? So, we're very, very happy to have them. Debbie comes to us from Las Vegas, where she was working the planning department there, and working the front counter, and she's doing a lot of her front-counter work now, so. And Patrick's actually returning home. I think he moved off to Florida.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but he's now returned to homeland. So, very happy to have them aboard.
That it? Go home.